We will call this meeting to order and thank you all for coming with us this afternoon. We'll start with the rule call. Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Payne? Ms. Ellis?
Here.
Mr. Worthing?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Bybee?
Here.
Ms. Williams? Dr. Knotts?
Here.
Ms. Thornton? Thank you. Next on our agenda is a silent meditation followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please stand to give the silent meditation and the pledge. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the recognition of achievement and awards.
Good afternoon. It is my privilege to recognize two sets of students at tonight's award meeting. The first are students who represented Clark County School District at the Regional Social Studies Fair. And the second group will be our oratorical contest winners. So we will begin, students, when we call your name. You will come up, receive your certificate, and then shake hands with Dr. Beans and the board. And we just want to thank you in advance for how you've represented Clark County Schools and for the excellent way that you've also represented yourselves. And congratulate you all on your achievements. First, for our regional science fair, we have Luke Kronk. And Luke is a student at Clark Middle School. Come on up. And his contest was Justice Without Action. House of Clark Middle School, Latvii Lektr. And his project was Freedom to Hate. We have a joint project from Hillsman Middle School, Iki Loa Ojos. And I don't think she was able to be here tonight. And Tanaya Roberts. From Cedar Show's High School, Joanna Trigueros. From Burning Hands Alliance, Rafael Figueroa. From Hillsman Middle School, Michael Castillo. Also from Hillsman Middle School, Achille Ward. Then we have more than 20 students from elementary, middle, and high schools in Clark County who represent schools in the Optimist's Oratorical Contest for the Athens area. The contest was held at the University of Georgia Law School on Saturday, February 24th. Each student spoke on the topic, "Where are my rules of optimism?" We had three young ladies and three young men to receive this award. And they will now go on to represent us at this own contest in Flowery Branch, Georgia. From Clark Middle School, we have Johan Humm. Also from Clark Middle School, Andy Magana. Barrow Elementary School, Samuel Rushing. From Barrow Elementary School, Sam Kipper. Barrow Elementary School, Lucia Bybee. From Clark Middle School, Addison Hug. From Barrow Elementary School, Tadee Thomas. And last but not least, from Cedar Show's High School, Amber May. Once again, we would like to congratulate all of our students for their accomplishments. And we appreciate how you have represented Clark County Schools.
Thank you for reading those out. Yes, congratulations to all of our recipients and thank you for joining us. Next up, we have... Do you need to amend or adopt our agenda for this evening?
I have a motion to move the Foundation for Excellence Report from Information Items to the Board of Education and the Board of Directors.
Is there a second to that motion? Any questions, Congress? All in favor? Thank you. Next up, we have some visitors here. Then, a motion to adopt the agenda you mentioned.
I know that the agenda feels doctorless, man.
Thank you, Ms. Thorpe. Dr. Knotts, all in favor? Thank you very much. Next up, we have two visitors here to speak to us this evening. First, we have Julie Farmer from the United Way Dolly Parton Imagination Library.
Hi, I just wanted to take a moment to commend a thank you on behalf of United Way in Northeast Georgia for the good work that y'all are doing in our district. At United Way, we are working to acknowledge how to creatively solve problems that involve education, health, and financial stability. And y'all are doing really great work in acknowledging the overlap of those things to improve your one-time education outcomes. And then I wanted to share two little stories that encouraged me in my work specifically with our Imagination Library within your school district in the last seven days. So the first one, on Friday, I got to read at Shroud Elementary School for their Shroud Reading Day, which was Dr. Seuss's birthday. And I read to two fifth-grade classrooms of students. And one of the books I read is one of our family's favorites, which is The Runaway Tomato. And I was really impressed with how Shroud Elementary students engaged the content and how together we anticipated what was happening as the tomato grew and became unmanageable and how it took the whole community to clean up the mess. And together, we talked about what are some healthy dishes that we all eat that involve tomatoes? And so it was really fun to be with them. And their teacher helped us engage the if-then-that sequence. And it was really awesome to hear 10-plus students do that strategy. And the second one, the second story that occurred to me is this week I picked my daughter up from after-school care at Cornet Shoals. And the after-school care tutor was working with Jillian on The Perfect Present, which is another Imagination Library book. And they were doing further comprehension. And this is a great book that really helps us to understand what happens when your feelings are hurt? What happens when you feel sad or left out? And so I was encouraged to see that the impact of this program doesn't stop when kids age out at age five, but that they were still actively being used to continue engagement in our school district. So I just came bearing encouragement today. And later, I'll share with each of you, I brought an extra copy of our first book that all program participants get, which is The Little Engine That Could, just as a way for y'all to be encouraged and to share it with whatever little readers are in your life or adults in your life that could also be impacted by the message of that classic. So thank you so much. And I'm thankful for all the ways we are partnering right now as a United Way with the school district. And I always look forward to future growth and partnerships. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Farmer. Next up, we have Ed Helm from Everybody Reads Athens.
This is a very exciting time in Athens. Thanks to your dynamic superintendent, our dynamic superintendent, and the leadership at the Athens Housing Authority, every one of the children in the Housing Authority will now be signed up and be a part of the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. What does that mean? That means from the time a child is born in the 27 housing projects, they will get, in their name, sent to them a book, like The Little Legend That Could or, like more recently, Dolly Parton's Coat of Many Colors. And until they're five years old, they will get one book amongst. So when they start school and the kindergarten teacher presents them with this thing called a book, they won't look at it strangely. They will dive into it. They'll be excited about it. Instead of having a vocabulary of, say, 500, 700 words, their vocabulary will be 7, 10,000. What a wonderful step for the Housing Authority. And thank you, Dr. Beans, for working closely with them for the Board of Education. This is an exciting, exciting time. So Ms. Farmer coordinates the Dolly Parton Imagination Library in Athens. She works for United Way. They're the coordinator. It's been in Athens 10 years, but still less than half the children that qualify are in the program. So we've got work to do, but this is a giant step that the Athens Housing Authority is making, and a wonderful step. And so we're here to celebrate the school board of Dr. Beans. And so we were able to get some of these new books. And we have two to give out. One to Dr. Beans, and we want Hannah to read it to him. So he's a busy guy, and so I'm sure if it gets in her hands, she'll make sure he hears this. Because it ends with a story about how she was poor when she grew up, and her dad was illiterate, and that's why she started this program. And you know what happened last week in Washington, DC at the Library of Congress? She presented one of these same books to the librarian of Congress as a symbol of the 100-millionth book that the Dolly Parton Library over the last 23 years has given to children, first in her little community, and then her state of Tennessee, and then the United States, and now it's in four countries. So little things start small, but sometimes they get very big and wonderful. And so we want to make sure that every member of this board, as well as the Athens Housing Authority Board, gets a copy of this great book. And with a letter that I'll read briefly from Jeff Conyers, the Dollywood Foundation. He's the executive director of Dolly Parton's Imagination Library Foundation. To Dr. Desmond Bean, superintendent of schools, Clark County, Georgia, Clark County Board of Education, Athens Housing Authority Board and Staff. Dear Dr. Desmond Bean... And all. Last week, we celebrated a truly historic milestone for our Imagination Library family when Dolly Parton dedicated a special edition Coat of Many Colors as the 100-millionth Imagination Library book to the U.S. Library of Congress. I'm writing today with appreciation for the February 22nd, 2018 action of the Athens Housing Authority to expand Dolly Parton's Imagination Library to benefit over 600 new children and families living in the Athens housing it provides. This success of Dolly Parton Imagination Library wouldn't be possible without the countless volunteers and local partners like you and the United Way of Northeast Georgia. You really do put wings to Dolly's dreams of inspiring a level reading. So on behalf of Dolly and our team, 100 million thank yous. Sincerely, Jeff Conyers, Executive Director.
Thank you, Mr. President.
So we're going to give these books now, entrusting one to you. And we'll have more coming, and one to Dr. Beans.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda, we have a report from our superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. President. And board members, I just have a few items to share with you. I would even just like to say thank you to our speakers. I was very kind of you to be here this evening. The school district has made it known that we believe that literacy is really that pathway of getting out of, not only some of our academic struggles that we have with the school system, but eventually out of poverty for a lot of our families. So thank you for partnering with us. I think the Athens Housing Authority and their partner deserves a lot of credit for taking the lead and putting forth the dollar. You may be wondering, so how much does it cost for this type of initiative to work? Well, it's $31 per student. And with the $31, we are able to partner with United Way and get those books in the hands of young people. Research shows that when you have a literacy-rich home, that you read more, you're exposed to text more, and that just helps the learning process. So thank you again for your kind words. Couple other items. The first is, we are, I believe, a very exciting time as a former social studies teacher, in that we have young people who are engaging in protests. And they're engaging in protests based on what they believe is important for them and what's important for their voice to be heard around, not only Athens, Clark County, but our nation. I just want to go on record as saying that as a school system, we want to support our young people in expressing their voice in a safe environment. And we also want to make sure that it's in an environment where they can learn and grow from the experience. And so I just want to say thank you, I see in the back, but our principal of Clark Middle handled and has been handling student protests extremely well over the last week. I barely missed it, but I'm not a child of the '60s. I studied the '60s, but I'm not a child of the '60s. And so for some protests, it looks different, and it looks chaotic at times for people. We believe with Clark County School District that it's a learning experience. And while it may not be in the classroom, it's still something that young people can grow from. Now, there's boundaries to it. It can't spill over into being unsafe. And it can interrupt the learning environment for other young people who may not want to protest. But if we stay within that framework, we just want to be on record as saying that we encourage our young people to grow in that space. As a result of our spring break next week, our students will not participate in what we believe will be a nationwide protest on March 14th. And so if you are around or if you're near television next week, you're going to see that there will be student protests, not only in Georgia, but across the nation on March 14th. But I believe that there will be another opportunity for our young people to engage in a nationwide movement in April. And so to that end, I just want to thank our staff, Dr. Donald Myers. We've had our curricular leaders put together information to lead and guide young people as they decide if they want their voice to be heard through protests. The last thing I would say about this student protest piece is that there are a lot of staff members who are working with young people behind the scenes and helping them guide their thoughts and making sure that the voice that's being heard are truly the authentic voice of our young people and not of others. And so I just want to thank all our educators for stepping out of their traditional boundaries of being either a principal or a classroom teacher and helping our young people grow in a unique way. The other thing that I would share with you was paramount. There's a lot of different things on my plate as superintendent, but the most important is our school safety. And I think I've made this aware and have made this announcement before, but I want to just make sure that the public hears this again. We've engaged with a company. The name of the company is Safe Havens International. Safe Havens International is a company that does security audits for school systems. Mike Doran, D-O-R-N, is the president of Safe Havens International. He's the former police chief for the Cobb County School District. And he does multiple school audits annually. And in some cases, those audits take him across the world. His team is currently doing safety audits on all of our campuses. And I want to be very specific in saying campuses. So it includes this HT Edwards Office of Early Learning campus as well. I anticipate that we will have preliminary report from Safe Havens somewhere in May. And we'll be able to present that final report to the board in June. I think it's just another step in trying to reassure families as much as we can that the safety of their children is very important to us. And we can always get better, and that's the purpose of the law. And then finally, I know the students can tell us this, and I know maybe even some of the staff, but we are on spring break next week. So we won't be in session March 12th through the 16th. We'll resume classes on Monday, March 19th.
Mr. President, board members, community, that's the conclusion to my report. Thank you. Any questions for our superintendent? You see, next on our agenda, we have a series of informational items. These are all part of our packet and available online. Anybody who would like more information on any of the informational items, you can see this is in section E on our agenda. That's our agenda. We have...
Yes, we know who's doing the parent advisory board on...
In April? Mr. Davis, you are?
Oh, thank you. And that's going to be aware of what's...
They've changed their location to HD Edwards. So it's here, room 78. We, the Stages and I, were able to engage the parent advisory board this past Monday. It was a pleasant conversation.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
As a result of that meeting, I do have a document to share with the board. I just got it scanned, because they gave us a copy of their vision and their mission. It would be good for us to look at that as we continue our work.
Thank you. Board reports. We have a report from the GSBA. A report from the Government Relations Committee.
Yes, sir. Thank you. First off, what I want to say that we, as a government relations committee, we met on February 20th. And our presenter was Clara Subs, who was Senior Education Policy Analyst with the Georgia Budget Policy Institute. And what we do on our committee, our Government Relations Committee, particularly during the legislative season, as board members know, is that we focus on legislation that is before the state legislature and can affect public education in Clark County. The topic at that meeting was primarily House Bill 482, which was a voucher bill, which was pretty, actually, setting up, allowing a certain amount of, being set aside by individuals and families with education savings account program to support private education in one facet or the other, whether it would have been private school, whether it would have been tutors, whether it would have been a college, the senior college. This was something that we're very concerned about because we all know that the state has a limited amount of resources, as we all do. And so if you take a computer, you're probably going to drop some calls. And that's something that we're very sensitive to. And there's an article, if you didn't grab one, I think it was an article in the back, called "Lawmakers Push the Shift of Public Money in Private Schools." And that is a real concern of ours on the Government Relations Committee. But that voucher bill, 482, fortunately, did not pass. It is now dead for this year. And so we're very fortunate about that. There are a couple of other bills I want to address to the board and to the public that we are still concerned about. One is House Bill 217, and that's listed on that sheet. And what that does is it expands a tax credit voucher program that was instituted a number of years ago. And it just gets bigger. And so their House Bill 217 is now in conference with the Senate and the House. And what they're trying to do is come up with a figure that they all can agree on that will increase this amount. And again, this is putting, just because it's a tax credit, that means it costs taxpayers because someone is paying less tax because they're putting money in this direction. So if you have, you know, the time and the interest of calling to other board members and also to the public to contact legislators on that bill, that would be very, very helpful. If you pick up one of these sheets, either now or on your way out, you will see that there are other pieces of legislation that impact public education. And again, the framework that we're dealing with when we're talking about limited pot of money that the state legislature has to spend is what they've been doing is that we are still... We had austerity cuts during the recession. And those austerity cuts are still in place. They have not been totally wiped out. So we are actually, as a public school system in the state of Georgia, the state legislature owes us $167 million. Put it out there. While they still owe us money, they've also eliminated all state funding for health insurance for custodians, bus drivers, and non-teaching staff. So all that is coming on the plate of local governments. So I just recommend that this be an issue that's followed, that's being followed by the board and by the public. I've got one other thing I want to mention briefly, and that is Senate Bill 452. 452 is a bill that will require all police officers to inquire as to the immigration status of those who they stop. It will require the judge, I mean, the sheriff to inquire as to immigration status for anyone that crosses his doors. And it will also put the same burden on our judges. I won't go through the opposition to that. There is, you know, if you see me later, I'd be glad to share some of the more detailed reasoning why this is a bad bill. I'm just going to mention two. First off, it's an unfunded mandate. In other words, as local taxpayers, we're being asked to reinforce immigration laws in this state and in this country. And there are no dollars attached to it. It's just putting more burden on our police department and judges and that type of thing. The second reason is one that we addressed a number of months ago. The second reason is one that we addressed a number of months ago with our Safe Schools Resolution. We feel like as a board, and this is something that we passed as a resolution, we feel like as a board, and we know that this to be true after talking to staff as well as school leadership, the fact that when our children, parents who are undocumented, are afraid to go home because they're afraid that a parent will not be there. Or actually, the way it was put to us is that they don't want to leave town because they're afraid that while they're out of town on a field trip, one of their parents would be, will not be home when they get home. When there is fear in the home, it's hard for young people to stay focused on their studies. And that's our business, is encouraging young people to be focused on their studies and to do what we can as a board and as a community to take away distractions. And so I do ask you to look more closely at SB 452. I did give the board incorrect information. I gave it correct when I sent an email, but incorrect here. That bill is currently, it's passed the Senate and is sitting with the Speaker of the House, and he's trying to decide what committee it goes to. And Deborah Gonzalez, one of our representatives, has strongly recommended that it go to the Judiciary Committee, where she serves, as opposed to Homeland Security Committee, which is, would be less receptive to asking questions about this particular piece of legislation and the impact on families. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Davis, I'm looking at this sheet, House Bill 664, which appeared to be with us. But I did not know that the 529 funds also could be used for tuition for private institutions. He's done saying that, because I purchased a 529 plan, my friend's, but I didn't know that.
Yeah.
So I got to follow that. Another thing I want to mention to you, the Government Relations Committee, let's look at the item, House Bill 903. Teacher Retirement. That bill, and I can't recall the name of the person that actually authored that bill, but that bill is saying that if a teacher started teaching home before 1993, they're going to try to prep the cost of living.
Yes.
The code. So that's something, I guess it will affect you, I know it will affect me, but it would affect thousands of teachers in the state of Georgia. Now, some of the people that I've talked with, like Tom Oberm, Tom Oberm is the president of Oklahoma County Education, also G.S.B.A., but he's thinking it's not going anywhere. But there's something that we need to keep an eye on, because that would be terrific. Because I can recall several years ago when Governor Sutton, who was our governor, he was pushing some legislation to do away with the cost of living assessment for all teachers. But it failed miserably, so we need to keep an eye on it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. President. Next on our agenda, we have the Finance Committee. I know Mr. Hamlin may have the word, but first our committee chair, do you have anything for the Finance Committee?
Yes, we talked about this in the finance meeting on last Thursday, and we talked about giving a financial report, and Mr. Hamlin, I think is ready to do that this evening. To share with the public.
Sir.
Okay.
It's on the action later on, it's an hour, it's action soon.
Okay, that's finance.
What was that?
It's right here.
So we'll look forward to that, look forward to the action, and we will...
Okay, okay.
And the Policy Committee?
I made my report at our work session, I don't have anything else to add. There was just a little bit of confusion about when our next policy committee meeting is. It's not Monday, March 19th, it's the following Monday, March 26th. So I give this weekend, we're starting practice, we'll have to read all your material, I'm restricted, right? That's enough of me. I think that's it, I don't have anything else to report.
Thank you, Mrs. Gonzalez. We have a report from the Property Committee, number four. And the Foundation for Excellence.
Thank you, Mr. Bybee. I am the board representative this year for, on the board of the Foundation for Excellence in Public Education, which is an organization here in Clark County that provides about $40,000 a year in awards and grants to district teachers, administrators, and students. And so it's a community organization. That's, its executive director is C.J. Amos, I think any of us know C.J. And I'm very pleased to be able to attend their meetings and to help out. In addition, I'm the board of education rep, Dr. Zerona Thomas is our school district liaison. So we get together and partake in the work of the Foundation for Excellence. What I want to highlight is that they're doing nominations for their awards in a slightly different way, in a multi-step process this year. And they're seeking nominations for their awards. The nomination period ends tomorrow at 5:00. So if you know someone that should be nominated for one of the several different awards for teachers and staff and so forth, please do that. You don't have to have a complete packet, it's just the name. And so you go on the website and put the name in, and then there's another process for actually putting the packet together. It's been designed to make things a little easier on the principals. And so if you know anyone that needs to be nominated for one of these awards, a little cash, pat on the back, and that sort of thing, please do that. So that's the main thing that I needed to bring. But another item that kind of piggybacks off of what Greg was talking about with government relations. The Foundation for Excellence at their board meeting expressed concern about threats to public education. And so I'm working with the executive director, C.J., on some kind of statement that they can put out that is a support of public education, a lot of the things we've been dealing with and talking about. And so that concludes my report for the Foundation for Excellence.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. That takes us to action items. First, we have making review minutes from our work session on February 1st, 2018. Is there a motion to adopt these minutes? Thank you, Mr. Orton, a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy. Any question or comments around the minutes for our work session? All in favor? And then we also have minutes from our regular meeting, February 8th, 2018. Is there a motion to adopt those minutes? Thank you, Ms. Davis, and then Mr. Davis for the second. All in favor? Thank you. Next up, we have financial report for January 2018.
Mr. Bybee, as Mr. Hamlin makes his way to the podium, this will now become a new procedure for the board. I want to thank our financial, our Finance Committee for making this suggestion in that the finances for the board should be something that the entire board receives, but more importantly, the community also gets an update on our fiscal health. And so I want to thank, again, the Finance Committee for suggesting that we modify how we operate. We're in good hands with Mr. Hamlin, he does good work, and I think we're continuing to develop key performance indicators that not only will help the board, but the public track how we're doing. Mr. Hamlin?
Thank you, Dr. Mee. Good evening, President, board members, Dr. Mee, staff, and the public here tonight with us. There will be three things that we'll talk about tonight quickly. We'll talk about the financial statement itself, some KPIs, key performance indicators that Dr. Mee's talked about, as well as a cash flow statement. So what I would like to do is just highlight a couple of things on the balance sheet for you. On the balance sheet, you can see we have a very robust cash balance of $61.5 million, as well as an undersecured fund balance of also about $61.5 million. On the revenue and expense sheet, a couple of things I would like to point out on the sheet, and you go down. On the revenue side, the budget for this current year is $142.9 million. We've already collected 100.6 of that, we are at 70%. One thing I do want to point out, that the ALARM tax at the very top, which we had budgeted at $72.8 million, we've already collected 69 million of that, we only have 3.5 left the next five months to collect. We're already at 95.1%, so we're ahead of pace on that. If we can go down to the expenses, please. We have a budget of $145.9 million in expenditures. The current expenditures within conferences will bring us to $78 million, and we're only at 46.2% with five months plus April, so we're in a good place right there with that. And the next page, please. This page is a informational page. It talks about how much our budget is for legal fees and what legal fees we have incurred up to this point, how much of that is total, how much we have available in our budget to pay for the remaining year. This is also information that shows us how much we have in the budget for travel to the coordinators, currently how much has been spent and by which board member. That gives us the total expense for the year and what's available in the budget going forward. And this gives a breakdown of that $580 you saw before, what it was for. Mr. President, that is the financial side of the statements. If I can go ahead and look at the KIPs, KPIs, and look through those with you. So basically, what we're trying to do here is to give you an indication of where our current cash position and fund balance position is in relationship to last year. As you can see, we start off the year a little slow in cash, but currently we're ahead in expectations where we were last year, shown by the blue line for 2017 and the current number shown by the red line for 2018. The opposite, the same is true also for the fund balance position. We start off a little bit slow based on where we were last year, but we picked up speed as we went into the November-December time period. And currently, we're ahead of schedule fund balance where we were for 2017. This is KPIs, giving you a understanding of how collections are going between current year and previous year, 2017. So as you can see in red, we're slightly, we're slightly ahead back in November when we collected the majority of our property tax revenue. Currently, we are on par where we were last year, 2017, income collections. The expense side, as you notice, is a little bit different. We are slightly behind last year's expenditure rating. So that tells me that we're doing a good job of not spending as much money as we had planned to. So this is basically a breakout of the current monthly revenue that's collected on a pie chart, broken out by different categories. Does anyone think that a little bit better? Thank you. So what we try to do here is break out the pie chart with the different areas. And as you know, it's the largest percentage collection for the current month, which is the $5.4 million. That is QBE funds. I make sure we collect QBE funds pretty equally throughout the year, since it's paid out by the state.
Mr. Hamlin, what does QBE be?
Yes, sir. QBE is the state money that the state guarantees us every year. It is the quality of education money. Thank you. Yes, sir. The next large item is the ALARM tax at 1.3. And as you can see, the rest of the money, which is about 2% next up to other categories. This is the same table for expenses, and we broke down the pie chart as well again. The largest area you'll see, which is to me kind of like bluish-purple, but maybe somebody else can tell us, is instructional, and you can see that that's about $7.5 million that we've left that we've spent. The other areas are broken down correspondingly by the colors, and as you look at the top, the ledger, you can see how that breaks down. Any questions on that? All right, let's go to the剩下 of the last two. So what does that mean? So we looked at the financial statements, it kind of showed us where we were on revenue collections. But what we're doing here is we're trying to compare that to the budget to give you an indication how we're going year to year, month by month, on the budget collections. As you can see, the red line is actual, and the blue line is budget. And right now, we are slightly above collections on a month-by-month basis on our revenue going through the month of January. And the opposite is also true with the expenditures, we're slightly below on our expenditure level based on budget going month by month forward. So what that does for us is it finishes off with the last table, the KPI. So we started the year, we look at our line, we see a budget column. We started off the year with a budget deficit built into the budget of about $2.9 million. And as you can see, each month going forward, that deficit would go up and down based on revenue and expenditures for each month. What I can successfully say is by the month of January, we pretty much erased most of our deficit that we had built in the budget, and we are ahead of schedule right now. Currently, we have about $414,000 revenues over expenditures going into the month of January before year end. Now what I'd like to do is show you the cash flow analysis.
Before you leave that...
Yes, ma'am.
I found this, the difference in the words expenditures, I may just make a note. Go back and make sure that our total matches what we showed in terms of the actual portions. It's only $100,000. So just go back, it's there, something, you might go back now.
I'm sorry, Ms. Davis, what'd you say again?
On the board expenditures?
Yes, ma'am.
There was a difference of $100,000.
Okay.
That I saw, and it could be my eyes, but please make it there, make sure that's down.
Yes, ma'am. So this cash flow analysis we developed about four or five years ago, what we're trying to do here is, you can see the columns in yellow, that's actual data, and you can see the columns in blue, that's budget data. And what we've done is, is we've taken every year historical data and we add it up, and we divide it by the numbers of years of historical data we have, and we're trying to level out the budget for revenue expenditures, so we don't have as much plus or minus as each month. And we put that historical data by month in there at the beginning of the year, so all that would be blue, currently we're at the January. And what we do with this, is we're trying to get an idea of where we are projecting out with five months remaining for budget versus six months factual, where we think we're going to stand in the year. So for example, if you look at ALARM taxes, right now we're projecting to break even on that. If you could look down to the next column, which is other real estate taxes, we're projecting to come in about $80,000 more there in that particular column. Overall, right now, on $142.8 million budget, we're projecting about $143.4 million, so we're projecting excess revenue of about $629,000. If we can go to the expense side, please. On the expense side, the color coordination is the opposite, so it's actually red, and black is good and red is bad. So in this case, we're projecting $96.8 million in instructional costs, but we actually have $95 million. We're saving about $1.7 million to this month, to year end with the projections. And at the bottom, you can see there's $145 million, almost $146 million budgeted for expenditures. We're predicting $143 million for the savings of possibly $2.9 million in expenditures year to date. And that would save us, between those expenditures and the revenue, receiving a savings of $3.5 versus a potential deficit currently of $3.1 with a surplus of $414,000. If you look at the very last column down there going across, you'll see $26.9 million. That is our projected fund balance at year end when we close the books. So it looks like we will, in the year, currently based on the current information, project it out for the last five months with a surplus of $414,000 and a projected fund balance of almost $27 million. Mr. President, that is the end of my presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Hamlin?
Different question. What would be the percentage of the fund balance if you're projecting correctly?
It would be somewhere in the 16% to 17% range, based on next year's budget.
Would you go auditors recommend the fund balance?
Auditors recommend 15%.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? That's the conclusion of my report, thank you very much.
Mr. Hamlin, I know this is the first time you've done this, but it is good. And I think it's helped the board members and the community members for the entire community that here, so thank you.
Yes, sir, very much appreciated.
Fantastic, thank you very much. Is there a motion to adopt the financial report?
No move. Second.
Mr. Davis and Mr. Worthy, thank you very much. All in favor? Thank you very much. Next up, we have policies, regulations, exhibits to be posted for public review for four weeks. Policy GAK, criminal background check, and... Policy GAK, criminal background check, and Regulation GAK R1, criminal background check. Have a motion to post these policies? Dr. Knox, thank you very much. Is there a second? Davis, thank you very much. All, any questions or concerns around policies? All in favor? Ms. Williams, thank you. We also have a policy to adopt. This is Policy GBN, professional personal evaluation, which has been revised, and Regulation GBN R1, professional evaluation.
Just for clarity, we have not received any public comment on this, with, on this revised policy, via the outside board.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt this policy? Ms. Ellis, thank you very much. And a second from Mr. Davis, thank you. All in favor?
Wait, can I have this? I'm sorry, I'm in. You, what they say is, is that to make a depression, you have to say the same thing a couple times. I do want to compliment the board because the goals we're in for our, for our teaching staff in particular, this was a very vote, and this upholds our responsibility to our teaching staff in terms of, you know, how they're treated. So I just want to compliment the board for being so unified on this measure.
Thank you. All in favor of those policies? Ms. Williams, thank you very much. Next up, we have six items on the consent agenda that we have reviewed and discussed. Is there a motion to adopt consent? Davis, thank you very much. A second. Ms. Williams, thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Number 11, received. This is for, approved Timothy Rowe overnight field trip to Chuckville Island. They put forth these says. Received that information this week and have a chance to review that. Is there a motion to approve this for my field trip? Ms. Ellis, thank you. And Mr. Davis, thank you very much. Any questions or comments around this item?
I want to go. I want to go too. It's like we're dropping out at the last minute. I'm in favor.
The row runners, thank you. They, it was a timing issue, and that's why it's not part of the consent agenda. So your ability to act on it so quickly is also, is happening internally, and so there will be a lot of happy young people activity. I'm sure Dr. Worthy, who is now Dr. Worthy, the principal at Timothy, she just finished her doctoral degree at UGA, so it's Dr. Worthy. I'm sure she would take more chaperones.
If you are interested, give Dr. Worthy a call. All in favor of this item? Thank you. We also received a list of personal recommendations that you have a chance to review. Is there a motion for to, for doctor recommendations? Davis, thank you. A second. Mr. Davis, thank you very much. Any questions or comments?
I just, I didn't. I was just going to ask Dr. Meeves to kind of maybe say a word about the teacher affair that's up and coming.
March 31st, Clark Central High School, where what you're acting on, Ms. D P, is recommendation for contracts, and we get contracts out earlier. I think we're trying to tweak our system so we can get out as quickly as possible. As I get to learn Georgia more, I know that there's still, some school districts that are still out even ahead of where we are right now. So there's, there's always room for improvement, but this is better than where we've been in the past. And so that, that commitment to continuous improvement will continue to get us in a good spot. But we're really pleased about the ability to have a job there on March 31st, and we have a theme of rock star educators is what we're looking for for our kids. So we're really, we're excited about the opportunity ahead of us. March 31st, Clark Central High School. I just want to thank our Human Resources Department because they, they did, they humored me, and they, they did move quicker than normal than, than the past, and I'm just very appreciative of the hard work. It took a lot of work for us to not only get in this position to have you act on contracts this evening, but also in public. Mister Hamlin and our HR department, we, you'll hear from us in April, our budget, our budget process is wrapped up, and HR is already working on having a lot of influence with principals and talk to all staff. So we, we will always continue to look at our processes and systems and improve, but I'm really pleased and happy that we've had so many, we've had so much growth and acceleration.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. President, and also Dr. Meeves, before we move forward, you were in the questionnaire recommendation sheet, and Dr. Meeves, the board was informed of a resignation that's going to take place at the end of this school term, but I see that name on this list, and I was wondering whether we need to delete that name.
No, that is not, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Full transparency, we had an announcement of a rubber resignation. Ms. Deanne Veritek, high school coordinator, Cedar Shells High School is going to be resigning at the end of this year. While she's on this list right now, that letter is already been received, and we'll act accordingly in the next few weeks. I would like to come to, for work with our Cedar Shells High School community on talking about timelines and that stuff. So thank you, Mr. Worthy, for mentioning it, and I would like to just acknowledge the hard work that Ms. Veritek provided to Cedar Shells community for the past two years. And I'm appreciative of the fact that she resigned at the time that she did, and part of her resignation at this point in time was to allow the district to get out onto the marketplace and try to find the very best principal we can. So thank you, Mr. Worthy, and I appreciate it. Any other questions?
Just for clarifying, would you mind just saying, if I would change our meeting from 6:00 to 5:00, just so that people understand exactly what the rationale was?
Sure. This is a one-time only situation. The 115th Annual Athens Area Chamber of Commerce Meeting is taking place this evening. It starts, reception hour starts now, it's at 6:00, and it goes from 6:00 to 7:00, and then at 7:00 that program begins. Part of the program is the school district recognized the Teacher of the Year, which is a Cedar Shells graduate and teacher who's their great puberty. And so that's the reason why we switched the time, the start time for this meeting
Then, all in favor of the, the personal recommendations? Thank you, Ms. Williams. And in a world of one-time onlys, this is 6:03 PM? Have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Thank you. All in favor?